There's a multifamily over by Snowbird that's related. There is no R1A, as I mean in the city. And I think we need to provide that option. As you heard people saying, there's a lot of it going on. Well, there's a reason. It's desirable. People want it. Builders wouldn't be building it if, and stuff. And I applaud Mr. Inger for the efforts that he's put into listening to the residents. He's given multiple options, and I guess some of those options are a little bit what worries me. I've been in property appraisal for 30 years and zoning for almost 20. And, you know, I would like to have a much more refined area of what's being rezoned than a percentage or something like that. So that concerns me a little bit. I would be against C1, Arts and Business. It allows people any parking spaces they had to have. And then they were even still talking about having non-permanible surface parking, like down like the plastic pads, but the grass still grows and stuff. So, I mean, a lot of it was just parking. So I think the willingness that the developer is showing to donate part of it to the park space or, and a flexible amount, it seems like, that that's a big concern. I do not want you raising my taxes to buy this property. A bunch of people got upset, me included, when the former city administrator opposed a budget that was going to double my taxes. And I think that was just to raise a little over $300,000. Take this property, it's considerably more than that. So I'm draining. That's, that would be much more appealing to me. And I don't want to, I do want to see that property developed. I don't want to see it and just stay a second. If we have the attitude of not encouraging growth and stuff, welcome to Northeast Borough, but we're going to get eaten up.
Cheryl Hobson?
I'm Cheryl Hobson. I live at 622. First, I'd like to address the actual Arts and Business master plan. Okay, so, you know, as they were saying on, excuse me, they were talking about the percentages of what people wanted and what they don't want. If we take a look, I think please on page three of that, we have that, the, let's just, let's not stand here, I'm sorry, just hold on a second. Okay, some differences of opinion here, right? If you look at what we have over here with Chris and Bob, okay, we need to get some more housing going, we need to start growing. That's really not what Keachai wants, but we are doing that, right? We are doing that. We're doing, like Rebecca's over, right? We've got the 70 that are almost, that are talked about here, that we have room for in Northwoods. I mean, they've all talked about it. There's, Joni explains that we have over 480 houses, types of housing, that can be put in Keachai. Which goes along, is actually more than what our 2040 plan has planned out for us. I mean, all that's there. The Arts and Business District is designed for arts and business, not housing. I mean, that's what people have said on the surveys. They've already addressed the housing, they've got plenty of housing. So let's already, the housing has already been addressed. We've got more than we need. The commercial part, I'm good with it, right? So let's, let's look at the plans that we have. I'm against, I'm against the, the housing in the Arts and Business District. Thank you.
I feel what everybody's already said about homes in Keachai, plenty of space for housing, lots of opportunities to build homes. We don't think this lot is the lot for that. I'd be willing to judge if Jeff can just, because every time they come to the table, it's better. It's a better opportunity, a better option. He's listening to community, he's making adjustments, he's really trying to work well with the city, and I really appreciate that. What I don't think they're hearing is that we don't want housing there. It's not zoned for housing for a reason. It was denied for a reason twice already for a reason, and the reason is, it's not for housing, it's for businesses. I imagine how incredible our town would be if it had our own little Plankton Square in that area, where people come from all over, because it's got the best pizza place, the best place to get popcorn or ice cream, and they come to town and they gather in this beautiful thing that we're looking for to attract in Keachai. That's just my personal opinion. I think it's opinion of most of the residents in Keachai. I really would appreciate if you consider that when making this decision. I think Jeff can afford with a great plan for us. I think it would be great if they didn't have housing. Thanks.
That was the last one. No paperwork filed for any other development? There's no activity on any other properties within the city of Keachai, except for ones that are already under construction?
And I would like to add to Chris's comment. Is, you say 70 houses up there, but he's tried to get a zoning change to reduce a lot like, they don't have any development up there. There's no way that that's ready. The one on 69th, it's a field. You know, that's a long ways from having housing on that unit. So I just want to agree with Chris. You know, we don't have housing options, 400 and some housing. We can't go build a house there right now. Matter of fact, you wouldn't even go buy a lot, because those are not for sale up there. They're additional 70.
Northwoods is planted. It's all planted.
It's planted, but that's, but have you tried to buy a lot out there?
So I've had papers that have asked if there's active permits, because I have friends who have been told that they are in the midst of buying, and they've had money involved with the owner of that, and I've said there's no active permits.
First, you got to get the owner
Absolutely.
To build, have bonds or whatever, so the city can put utilities in the, and you get growing support out there.
And I've identified proposed possible housing. This is stuff that's been taught. Bob Jansen has been to city council meetings, he's talked about it, he's the one that handed out a paper with a draft of it. Yep, he's got a rezon. So I'm just saying that those are just possibilities that are offered.
All right, I'm just telling you what it, what it is.
Absolutely.
Anybody else that you think to say before it? Anybody have any questions for you? Or would you? Okay.
I guess I do, I would have a question for Jeff. What is, what is the viability of developing the property for you without housing?
My gut tells me that it is not viable. I mean, you know, April's comment about, I put this work, I love the idea too. The reality of it, you don't have a population to do that. As mentioned, our first objective would be go out there and marketing commercial before we even think about moving to our 4500 block. I mean, so that's how we really find out how much commercial we can do. If, if I'm wrong, and there's that enough demand to do it, I'm happy to build a little commercial there. I mean, that's, that's like easier, and that would be less risk than patio homes. I don't expect that's going to happen, but I'm, as I'm definitely willing to expand the commercial portion as the man shows. We're not an impatient group, or we're going to go through and build everything tomorrow. I mean, we're going to go through and work out what's built up right. So building it, whether it be me or anyone else, building it all commercial, with the way it's zoned now, I don't foresee it. I mean, I wouldn't even try it. I didn't have a philosophy. I think, I think it was mentioned here, people have asked me before, if I had to develop that site, as this is the day of the zoning, what would I do? I would build many schools here. That's the only thing I can think of, you can put on that site that fits into this commercial zone. I mean, going through and building 40, 50,000 square feet, or even planning to do 40, 50,000 square feet of multi-tenant retail space, it's not feasible. I mean, you got to make major intersections in which, that's what you find out about those homes. You don't have that, just being that fast here.
Any final comments from the public? Hearing no further comments, everybody close the public hearing. The planning commissioner has been deliberations, there'll be no further public sound input. Let's plan the commission, ask for clarification for other reported comments.
Hey, my thoughts are that I think everybody agrees that we want development in this site. It's a matter of what development is right for the community. So I like some of the things that Jeff's gotten his plan on. I probably lean more towards, I think he had option C and D looked more in line with the sense that I get from the community. But I also, to Chris's point, can understand where we don't change zoning to something different, then it opens up negative possible implications for that property. I think we all are on board with the Arts and Business District, but if we try and get, you know, some development, we want the right kind of development, is this the right thing, you know? And I think that's the question we have to, we have to answer.
And he can't go out there and market it unless it's rezoned.
Correct? Yes. Yes, because I can't start working something and have a full C3 zoning there with, I'm not confident I have a thing that can work for that whole thing. Because if I find two, three tenants, and they want to go into a 10,000 square foot building, okay, I've got enough for a 10,000 square foot building, what am I doing with the rest of the site? That's my problem.
Well, and that was one thing I would recommend changing the front to either C2 or C1. I know C1 allows housing, but that's what, that's what the Arts and Business is all about. You can have housing, and you can have a business attached to a house. You know, I mean, that's what this is, the whole thing is set up for. There was a lot of, it was a lot of stuff about the surveys and stuff, and I don't know how many here actually participated, but I participated in all of it. And there was workshops that we did on those, and, and, you know, I mean, the sidewalks they wanted, what we're referring to is there's no sidewalk on the west side of Oliver. That kind of stuff. That's the stuff we were talking about with sidewalks and stuff. You have a, if you have a property that, you have to, and you have a developer, you got to give him something that is worthwhile for him to develop there, you're not going to pay the money for it. So, you know, I, I don't really see that whole thing turning into a C1 commercial district in the back there. It's too big. I kind of like what he'd set up. I thought that was a good compromise, having the commercial up front, there's some arts. If you've ever looked at those patio homes out on, on Rock, I mean, we have been looked at those, we thought those would be very nice. They're zero entry, they're small lots, you have a HOA or whatever that takes care of the lots for you. You ever put any next, put any next to you? You got anything to say, Phil?
Yes. On the original plan that was put forth last month or two months ago, I really wasn't too impressed with the overall site plan. And it was all, it had a lot of multifamily stuff, which the citizens didn't seem to want to have. I like what I see here. I agree with Luke. There's a couple other options there that might work better, but that requires, again, some interaction between the city, the citizens, and you, the developer. I don't know how that happens, where you can get in a room and hash it out, figure something out.
I've already been doing that. I've had two public, I've been before a meeting, so I have no call to continue that.
Yes, and I admire that. I'm not too much in favor, in general, of development of parks in any great amount. And the reason being, parks don't pay taxes. They take taxes. Chris pointed out that he didn't want his taxes lifted, but we all got our tax assessment last month, and my housing is going up because of those taxes. And I, I can foresee if we keep buying up more property that doesn't pay a property or a sales tax to the city, we're going to put ourselves in pretty hard times. I like the idea of the park that you have set up in this particular proposal, between the two commercial buildings. I've seen that done downtown on Douglas. I used to work downtown at KDHE, and I've walked that area, and there was a number of little pocket parks where people could go grab a sandwich, get a cup of coffee, they could go over to the park area, sit, eat it while, and feed the birds or something, you know? They would, they enjoyed the outdoor and they'd go back to work. Same way I could envision in our community, people walk around, I'd see them over at the park all the time, that they could stop in, buy a donut, and go over into the park area and enjoy the outdoor. But again, that, the park relationship between the city and the private needs to be worked out, as to how that would be managed.
It, yeah, of course, I understand that, and once we establish the city's preference that that remains private property, we have no problem with that. More, I just left it as open-ended based on what the city's preference is.
And I would also say that I agree with the idea that we need to do something soon, because again, the risk that we take is what it's currently zoned as could result in something that none of us want. And we get nothing out of it, other than some giant lot on the ground. So that's my thoughts.
And as far as the purchasing, the city purchasing problem, we tried, this was several years ago, this property right next door, it's two acres. We, we, there was three houses there, and they were all real bad shape. And we went to the city, me and Janet, and tried to get them to purchase those, and tear their houses down, because it's two acres right next to the same building. You know, it'd be perfect for them. But we ended up, well, I ended up buying those, third flight, because the city, they didn't want to invest the money. So I'm just saying, and the cost for that is nowhere comparable to what the cost you talked about.
And I completely understand, respect that. More of the thing, since it's been brought up as that, as a desired use for the property, just want to communicate that. I'm open to it if that's what the city wants, so.
Is that if you're going to get the citizens to?
I would say that too, yeah.
Something like that. You're more looking for somebody to donate a property?
That question, that question was asked, like, if it was an 80-acre development, yes, I could donate a five-acre park. Six, a five, a six-acre development, you can't donate three-acre park.
Okay, so do you, anybody have any changes they want to put in the, just the first or that Dustin wrote? So we can go, we can go through those. So the zoning uses compared to the neighborhood, we have discovered that, that's just number one. Informants of your request to change to adopt to recognize, comprehensive planning policies. I was involved in writing the comprehensive plan, the one before, the one we got right now. And yes, it was, I know the intent of that was to have a mix of, you got to have a place to have all kinds of different residential projects. We really do not have, do we have, is there R1A out there? Nobody has R1A. Or like this, we don't have any that I know of, zero lot line, like on 1800. I don't know, does anybody have anything they want to add to that? Informants or the adopt to recognize comprehensive plan? Who gives a favor?
I mean, were you able to adjust this to just changing the commercial aspect at this Rather than the R1A, change to the C1 or the C3? It's currently C3, right?
Okay, so yeah, if all C3, these requests to change that back portion to R1A, the new slot line. The front, was it good we left C3? I mean, my recommendation would be that that front portion, it's changed, same time that one gets changed, R1A to either C2 or C1. And it sounds like he'd rather C2, because, I mean, I would read too exactly what you have to do on that, but you can always, some of them are the same thing, C1 and C2, a lot of times on C1, it's a conditional use, where it might be an approved use.
Well, like I think my problem is a C1 is, and Dustin, if you're correct, I'm wrong that the multi-tenant building is not allowed in C1, which, I mean, that's effectively what this would be, is more like the retail levels.
Yeah, it's.
See, I have no problem with C2, but C1, just because of that limitation, it's not even a conditional use, it's a not allowed use.
Is it written, actually, I didn't look in there, but is it written in there on C2 that specifically?
It's allowed use, it's allowed use there, yes, but not allowed use in C1.
Okay.
It's one of those, it's one of your reasons I would live for that, for that one specifically.
Okay. So I would recommend the thing is change
To C2?
At the same time to C2. What, what was your question?
I'm good.
Okay. What all is allowed in C1? Yes. Well, one of the main differences is in, single-family dwellings are allowed, there's some allowed in C1, not in C2. You get C2, you can, you get assisted living facility, continued care facility, nursing care facility, you can have them, you can't abandon in C1. The, now this, okay. But you can have the residential mixed uses in C1, law department, commercial building. In C2, you can have a medical or diagnostic laboratory or medical clinic. You can have all kinds of, like the law offices and all that stuff, and the travel agencies. Okay, the multi-tenant office building, you can have that in C1, conditional use.
That's office, those are different ones of retail.
Well, you got to show me that, because I mean.
It's towards the, it's towards the end of the commercial zoning, because I created a chart that just did the three commercial zonings all next to each other. So it's like, you have to get down towards the end and then come up just a little bit. It actually says multi-tenant strip, because it is correct what Jeff has said, it's off, you guys allow the multi-office, but not multi-retail for C1.
Well, towards, towards the end, you're getting into like heavy industry.
Well, you have to go up just a little bit, if you go up a little bit from there, you'll end up finding the multi-retail strip center.
So things like bar and tavern that's approved in C2, it's a conditional use in C1. So if you had C2, you have to put in a bar, I mean, you'd have no say in that. The other one, you'd have to come before the, I don't know.
There's a multi-tenant strip center of the night house.
38?
38, yeah. Okay.
Where? About halfway down the middle. It's just above the industrial
Yep.
Land use line. It's there right here, it's allowed in C2 and C3.
I guess you definitely can see what the difference is between what the strip center is and. Well, one of them's office, one of them's retail.
Yeah.
One of them's office, one of them's retail.
Two different.
Let's see where that, you call that a strip center out there by the, I don't know, right?
Yes.
Okay, that.
Good looking office-based activities, having some shared common space for support functions.
Okay, we kind of went through what, what things you have, but with C1, you get more conditional use. They'll have to come to the planning commission and through the council to get approval to do certain things like the, of our.
The definition there of multi-tenant strip center is basically what we're talking about with multi-tenants, and that's not allowed use in C1. That's my problem. That's my only problem with C1.
Why are we still discussing this when the majority of the residents have said no?
Hey, we're done with the public hearing. So, we are, we're talking about here. Anything else? That's okay, so that, on that one. As, as Chris said, the public utilities, that's pretty well covered, but. No. No, you can't build apartments in C1. You can build single-family residences. Yeah, in C1. They want apartments, no, that's not apartment. Single-family residence is not an apartment. That's multi. That's what they want. Okay, suitability, such as used would be restricted. The C3, it's, to me, it's not suitable for C3 now that they're not putting in. It was changed to C3 for a specific use, and that use has gone away. And so it's no longer appropriate zoning for that sort of property. Length of the time that the property's remained vacant, it's been vacant as long as we've been here. So we've had, this is about the fourth time it's come between, before the planning commission. And so I think that is a factor. If we want to get this thing developed or something to happen with it, then we need to have something, we have to allow something. It's the statute which removal of restrictions will definitely affect nearby properties. I tend to view it as the same. Anybody else? Informants request change to the doctor recognized comprehensive plan policies. From what, like you said, what I've been involved in the comprehensive plan before, and I think it conforms to the comprehensive plan. Anybody else? Impact to the proposed development on community facilities. Dustin says there should not impact the public facility. We've got the public input. Looks like there was two, four, and the rest were against. Anybody got anything else to say?
I mean, I guess how do we best compromise this situation? Because that's where we're at, is we want development. We're not sure that housing is the right way, but Jeff can't market until we make a change to the zoning.
Yeah, so what he's requesting is an approval that won't happen until, until he comes up with a plan.
Until he's plotted, yes.
Until.
So if we approve the change to zoning, that will be.
It's on page three, page three.
Yes.
Yeah, provide the planning staff with a legal description of the portion of property approved for zoning change, and recommend, I would recommend change to C3 for C2 for our portion.
That's changed up. I don't think we can do that at this time. That would require another public hearing submitted by the city if you're wanting to change that property.
Okay, well, that's my recommendation, that the city initiate or change to C2. For our portion. That's just sort of recommendation. You don't have to do it if you want.
All right, I would move the planning commission adopt the finding system in the zoning administrator's report for case Z 2023-02, for the recommendation.
Matt Jones, City Administrator.
Okay.
I just don't think we can put a condition on there that requires the city to use.
That's not required, it's recommended.
Okay.
That's what I'm recommending.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I move the planning commission adopt the finding system in the zoning administrator's report for case Z-2023-02, for the recommendation of approval of the governing body regarding the request of rezoning to R1A, single-family zero-lot line. Residential district subject to the following conditions and changes. The developer provides the planning staff with a legal description of the portion of the property approved for the zone change prior to the case going to the council for final action.
We have the recommendation, city initiate change to C2. Just a recommendation, not a court.
Okay, as well as recommendation that the city change the front of the property to C2.
Yes.
Go again. I'm sorry. We can't make those recommendations, that the city change those.
We, we recommended it last time.
But it becomes an requirement that it's a condition that's put on the property.
Yeah, but all in, it's just reported.
You can make it as a separate motion.
Okay.
But not as a motion. The time to his rezoning is right now. So it's to separate.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion, second, by Mark to approve the zoning change. Add a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I need to be clear on what the motion actually was.
The motion was exactly what Dustin had.
Exactly what Dustin had.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. The recommendation, the recommendation in a written summary of the public hearing will be considered by the governing body at their 1/25/2024 meeting to be held at 7:00 PM. Thank you for everybody.
That, that will be contingent upon the legal description of the planning staff, so that may be extended to another date.
Okay, so how does everybody know when that date? So it'll be published in what, York Valley News?
It would be, it would be coming in the city council. It would be part of the public, city council agenda. The agenda itself is not published in York Valley News. Public hearing is not required. So when we publish the agenda with that on it, and those who are interested have the ability to request that be sent to them as well.
Okay, so you request the agenda for the city council meeting. Okay, so the second item was BZA-B-2023-02. We recessed last time to the February meeting, and I just made a motion that we extend that to one to the March.
I move that we move that to the next meeting.
To February, yes.
To February meeting.
Oh, February.
Trying to get it to work, I'll second. Motion by Luke, second by Asher to extend the recess, BZA-B-2023-02. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries for you. Anything else? Looks like you're paying the motion, isn't it? What about you guys?
You can't talk anymore.
I just, clarification, so the recommendation.
Oh, we were going to. Do you want to make a motion? I, I'll make a motion that we recommend to the city to change the C3 to C2 on that, that lot. Let's. On that case number 2023-02.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries for you. Okay, motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned.
Second, second. Motion by Luke, second by Mark, adjourned, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries.